But it's good. Because I'm ready for the fall.
Right.
Yeah, I'm ready for it.
Yeah.
I'll go there.
Oh, yeah.
So whenever you're ready, I think for Facebook Live already, CMC, can you pan camera number one up and down?
They're good.
All right, there we go. There we go.
August 30th, Mount Airy Planning Commission to order. And let's do a pledge to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of this country, to one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. Okay, first item, approval of our last Planning Commission minutes. Planning Commission members, if you've reviewed that, I would entertain a motion to accept.
A motion, we accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for May 24, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. All those who favor ladies and gentlemen, say aye.
Bill?
I'd amend it.
Aye.
I just want to make sure we ask both of the people that are on the phone what their vote is.
And we've got two Planning Commission members, Roxanne Hemphill and Martina McBride, that are calling in and are connected with us. How do the two of you vote?
Um, Bill, we need to amend it because it was July 26th, not May.
Okay, all right. So first, we're going to amend the minutes in terms of changing the appropriate date of our last meeting from May to July 26, 2021. And the motion to accept and second still remain?
Yes, still stands.
All right.
July 26.
Okay, let's do a voice vote on this. Carl, how do you vote?
Approve.
No? Oh, sorry, approve.
Yes.
Aye.
All right. Okay, and Leslie and myself and Martina?
Approve.
All right, and Roxanne?
Aye, yes.
All right, so it's unanimous. Those minutes are approved as submitted. All right, next item is for any citizen comments for items that are not on our agenda, meeting agenda tonight. Does anyone wish to bring forth any other points or issues? Okay, all right. Don't see it. Okay, our Carroll and Frederick County planners, I don't see the Frederick County planner, and we didn't hear if he could be able to be here tonight or not. He is leading the Sugarloaf Mountain Initiative. And that consideration for the Libicle Frederick Master Plan, so he's not here this evening, but we do have submitted from Carroll County and Hannah Weber, county updates for Mount Airy's August 21 Planning Commission. Below are the updates for the county for your Planning Commission this evening, August 30, 2021. Number one, the residential text amendment is still being discussed with the county Planning Commission. Transmitting the text as well as the two rezoning applications in the Eldersburg area to the Board of County Commissioners is expected in the next few coming weeks. Information can be found at www.carolrezoning.org because Carroll County has a fairly massive rezoning initiative underway. Secondly, 2021 Fall Water and Sewer Amendment application deadline is September the 6th, so in a week, in seven days. Information can be found, Hannah says, at Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan amendments, amendments, process and application. And lastly, number three, ongoing work with the Carroll Countywide Transportation Master Plan includes a second survey that will be crafted and available to the public in coming months. And Hannah's not with us tonight because Carroll County Planning Commission has decided that even social distancing differences from one location to another, they're not comfortable with sending their representatives out, and so therefore they're doing it from a distance. Okay, but we appreciate their participation nonetheless. All right. Okay, so that moves us to, I think, the heart of the evening, site plan subdivisions and development projects. The first of those being S-20-0020, Twin Arch Business Park Sections 4, Lot 5. Whoops, I have the wrong one.
I was going to say.
That was the old one. Get that out of the way. That was last month.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Too much going on. I'm juggling too many things. All right, the first item in terms of our current discussion this evening is ordinance 2021-17, proposed text change with regard to 25-3 zoning map amendment, tax map grip parcel 75114 and 60191423 to MXD. Let me first give a little background and a little context. And the first comment is, I think we're all still dealing with the news that we've lost Mayor Pat. He was 11 years Mount Airy's mayor, and before that, for many, many years, he served on the Mount Airy Planning Commission. Pat was instrumental in an initiative to create the very first comprehensive Mount Airy Town Survey. That occurred in 2008. The intention there was to set in motion an opportunity and a way to put essential questions and issues out to our citizenry and be receptive to what they had to say. It took a long time to put that together. It took even longer to analyze it. It went on for several years. But that effort, again, primarily because of Pat's initiative and his commitment, is something that we have continued. We did it prior to the update of the 2013 Master Plan. We did it as a first step in doing our update for the 2021 or 2022, 23, whatever date you want to pick, Master Plan. Okay? And Steve Demoter was one of the individuals back here in the audience that was instrumental in making that happen. We also utilized it in, when was it? It was 2012, because as it turned out, there was enough time between the 2008 original town survey and we were, when we were finally getting around to doing the 2013 Master Plan update, that we were concerned about the period of time that had elapsed. And so we did, and this was not an official town survey, but Mount Airy, Kiwanis and other groups coordinated, and we did a local Mount Airy Town Needs Assessment. And to the greatest extent, we found corroboration with the issues and the positions that were voiced back in 2008. And so we were comfortable in proceeding with the update of the Master Plan in 2013. After two to three years of working on that 2013 Master Plan, and we wanted it to be significant, we saw the need for a change in the direction that Mount Airy's Master Plans took. 2013 was the fifth Mount Airy Master Plan that we had done. And we felt it needed to be more grounded in what our citizens were telling us was important to them and what their concerns were. We also wanted to marry that with practical planning going forward. We were reaching out in better understanding how other municipalities approached that. We wanted to incorporate the rest of our local community team to make that vision something that indeed responded to the values and the concerns that our citizens had in the most practical ways to try to achieve those. I think most of you are aware that in the late 80s and during the 90s, we had significant development going on in this community. In fact, Mount Airy was the fastest growing community in the entire state in the 90s. So much so, that we received a consent decree in the early 2000s because we were starting to use more water than we should be using. And so we rapidly downsized how much residential development, it was primarily residential as opposed to commercial and retail, that we were approving. Tremendous downsize in it. But that gave us a breadth to take a look at where we are, where we wanted to be, and what was the best path to get there. One of the approaches that the Planning Commission felt would be instrumental in that regard was looking at our current downtown area where a majority of our retail and commercial locations were located, to say, how could we expand that? Because, quite frankly, because of development and because of historical development, it's a very, very small area. It takes a mile and a half, once you turn off of 27, coming north on Main Street to get to downtown. We still had no direct connection from Highway 27 to downtown. Could there be a way to replicate the personality, the significance, the importance of our downtown by doing a additional development, perhaps on Center Street, by putting it through? If that was the case, we wanted it to mirror the same kind of attributes that we had in the original downtown area, which was a combination of commercial, retail and residential. When we looked around in other municipalities and how they were approaching that same need, we started to understand the potential value of an MXD capability. And that's what caused us to say, as part of the 2013 Master Plan update, there are two additional land use ordinances that we feel and we propose that Mount Airy uses. One is an MXD, one is an office park employment. We also said, as an integral part of land use expansion, we saw no need to do more than infill of areas like the Beck properties and so forth that had yet to be developed within the existing town boundary. We already had infrastructure, for the most part, in place. Unless there was a compelling reason, and Harrison Lashier, for a while, looked like a possibility, we didn't see the need for annexation. That was the intent. That was part and parcel and a significant part of the 2013 Master Plan update. Rather than delay bringing that to completion and getting it approved, we said we will defer actually working through and finalizing both MXD and OPE. But another point that we did, there were two significant points that we also did as a part of that 2013 Master Plan update, we said, we want to do as much of our rezoning consideration at the same time as possible. We want to do it as a whole. And so we asked for and we coordinated all requests for rezonings. Okay? And in the case of MPE and OPE, we said, here's the intent, here is what we're trying to achieve, here is how it will look like, but we don't physically have that yet. And that still remains to be finalized. So with that understanding, we submitted what we had to Town Council, we put it out for response from residents, and we got approval, and we finalized in that form our 2013 Master Plan. Okay? The second thing we did was to say, we want all hands on deck when it comes to our commissions and our boards in terms of being on the same page. And so as, the essential way that we developed that 2013 Master Plan, we asked each of our commissions and boards to submit their suggestions, their goals, their recommendations for what that plan should entail, whether it was streets and roads, or it was water and sewer, or it was whatever, okay, parks and whatever it was. And we utilized those goals in the way we put that plan together. We also said, let's hold ourselves responsible going forward, that we are acting on the plan. And so we put in place an annual information exchange where we met and we updated each other on the progress that each of the commissions had made in terms of their appropriate sections of the plan. That's the context for where we are now. The only part of that 2013 plan that hasn't been fully finalized was the MXD ordinance, as an example. OPE was finalized. So what was envisioned, what was crafted over several years of working, is the ordinance that I hope you have reviewed. And if you wish to give feedback at this point, we'd love to hear.
I'd like to give feedback.
Okay. I'd love to start with our folks, but go ahead.
To start with?
No, go ahead.
So, I mean, I would agree with most of that. However, Bill mentioned that we chose or we wanted properties to be zoned together, zoned comprehensively. That's actually a requirement under Maryland law, and then there are slight exceptions, so that's not just something that we want. The other thing is that in the 2013 Master Plan, MXD did not exist. It was not a zone in our code book. So whatever reference to MXD was just a reference, it wasn't some enforceable provision because the zone did not exist. Now, I have another sort of legalistic part, but I want to just comment on some things that were said at the June 2021 Town Council meeting when this ordinance was proposed. So, first of all, there were a few comments, and some people were very new and they didn't, you know, I mean, they just knew what they heard from some of the other people. But it doesn't, first of all, it doesn't really matter what has been in the plan or we say, oh, this has been around for so long. That doesn't mean that you can kind of skirt regular process and procedures just because you think something's been in plans for, you know, longer than it should have been. But the thing about the, one councilperson mentioned that the Beck property is part of the Vision Plan, so the Downtown Vision Plan from 2019, I think it was, February 2019. Now, the Downtown Vision Plan, the Beck property is mentioned as a focus area, but it's number four. So number one is downtown Main Street, and actually highlights the adaptive reuse of the bank building as one example. Number two is the, I believe it's the rail yard. Let's see where we're going to go. So we've got, oh, here we go. We've got the Main Street, we've got, oh, the Flatiron Building Site, that's number two. Number three is Center Street and the Rail Yard, right over here, which could be a fantastic redeveloped project along with the bank building. And number four is the Beck property. So if we're talking about this as so crucial because it's in the Vision Plan, then I think that it's a little bit, it's behind a few other things. I mean, if that's like a reasoning that we should be doing this now. The other thing is that, and, well, there's the unrelated piece about the open space, but Beck property is not part of the downtown zone. If it was, it could actually be developed as part of the downtown zone. It has to be rezoned as mixed use, which could happen in the current master planning process, which we started in February. So the downtown zone is different than MXD zone, and Beck property is not part of the downtown zone. So, yeah, maybe it's in the Vision Plan as number four, but not part of the downtown zone. Now, the other thing that was, a councilperson said, there were a couple, and this is, you can watch this on YouTube and probably Carroll Media Center, this is the June meeting. Another councilperson in response, there was one councilperson who expressed some concern, and then in response, another councilperson spoke up and actually acknowledged that this ordinance, 2021-17, the Beck property, is being heard and introduced outside of the normal master plan process solely on the fact that due to the importance of this piece of property, that instead of getting lumped into the normal MP process, has potential to have its own individual hearing. So that basically is acknowledging that this is being considered outside of both the 2013 process, because we didn't rezonate, and this process, which actually means, because I reviewed this, we had a very fairly comprehensive and somewhat contentious hearing, I don't know, last year or two years ago, with the Vazzo property, and they wanted, and they, the property owners themselves, had requested a rezoning within the, you know, outside of the master planning process, which in my view is what this is. And they had to go through, you know, the exception, which is that you prove mistake, that the original zoning decision was a mistake and/or the surrounding area has changed significantly since the prior master plan. They did not succeed in that attempt, and that property was not rezoned. And I strongly believe that this is a very, it's closer, it can be, it can kind of be made to be confused, to not be similar, but it actually is similar. And in fact, because we are in the master planning process right now, there's really no reason to have a favoritism of some particular property that we're going to be discussing as part of the master planning process and very likely would get this zoning, but yet we want to do this in some, you know, kind of probably inappropriate, somewhat, at least certainly having the look of impropriety, which I, you know, do not think is a good idea at all.
Okay. All right. My apologies that I didn't start with the signups for the folks in the audience that wanted to speak tonight. Let's go to that, and then we'll come back to any other comments that we have from.
Bill, also, those documents that we're talking about, we're referencing, the Master Plan and the Vision Plan, are available on the Town's website. So we're talking about like mysterious documents, if you haven't read them, they are available, they've been available, they've been up for years. But just check them out, read them, see what you think.
Looks like the first residence on the sign-in form is the Kent family, Lisa and, is it Nicole, and Roger? Okay, anyone here who wished to speak from that group?
I might hold off on right now, because we'll get more information.
Okay. All right. Mike O'Brien, 806 Park Avenue.
I wasn't signing up to speak, I just thought that that was a regular sign.
Is there anybody that wants to speak? All right, all right. Steve Demoter, did you wish to speak, or were you just signing in?
I was just signing in, but I'll make one comment.
Come on, come on. All right, good.
Guess it was okay for you to speak after all.
If you're not already aware, Steve is one of our current Town Council members.
So just a quick comment. I had no intentions of speaking this evening, but Mr. Butts, in your opening remarks, you made reference that we wanted to clone the downtown area and kind of recreate that on the Beck property. But to the points that have been made, the downtown zone is indeed just that. It's a downtown zone. You're proposing to rezone the Beck property to mixed use, so it's not the same thing. That's the obvious point.
Understood, understood. It's an opportunity to have something that's similar to a downtown as an expansion. We wouldn't have it otherwise.
But they are different in terms of the size of buildings, number of buildings, densities, open space, all those things. So I don't think you should equate the two.
Thank you for your opinion. Go ahead. Okay, Dave Beck? I think it's Dave Beck as opposed to Beck Day. All right, good.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Dave Beck, owner of the Beck property where 27 goes through the west side and the east side. I printed out a document to leave with you and the panel, some of the statements you made, Mr. Butts, covers everything in this document. That was done on September 28 by Design Collective Comprehensive out of Bonne More. You all brought those folks in to do a comprehensive plan, how to bring the surrounding property to the downtown area, the connecting roads, the whole nine yards, and it's all in here. There's nothing, and anyone can get this document online, if they know what to search for. That's how I received this. And if you go through it, some of you members are on in, are stated in here, Mr. Hushair and also Mr. Jason Pryor have made comments in here. So I would like to leave you with these documents. Anyone else that would like to review them? But basically, what you've mentioned is starting the meeting about how to bring things to the downtown area, connecting roads, the whole nine yards, it's all in this document.
Would you be sure that John Greedy has a copy of that so he can share that with us?
And the web link is on there as well. I'll take it.
Take your copy, Mr. Beck, so I know.
So again, if folks that aren't familiar with, okay, yep, if, for folks that aren't familiar with the Vision Plan, that is the, from Design Collective to map out what the priorities should be if you wanted the town to, you know, make some changes regarding the progress that the community actually put forward for input. There was a set of charrettes, a charrette, a multiple night charrette, where people came and provided input, and Design Collective put that together and then created this Vision Plan. So that Vision Plan tells you where the vision for the future. And so, just to, you know, I know some folks haven't read these documents, I'm just trying to keep it straight in your heads as to what these documents are doing, what they're for. So, and that is the product of that, David, what you talked about.
And one last comment I would like to make, you know, as I shop around the town business areas, even go to the medical center at the top of Center Street, when people find out
So that Vision Plan tells you where, the vision for the future. And so, just to, you know, I know some folks haven't read these documents, I'm just trying to keep it straight in your heads as to what these documents are doing, what they're for. So, and that is the product of that, David, what you talked about.
And one last comment I would like to make, you know, as I shop around the town, business areas, even go to the medical center at the top of Center Street, when people find out my last name, oh, you're their owners of the Beck property, yes, first comment that comes to me when the Center Street going through. I mean, I think Ms. Dixon mentioned that Center Street is priority four. I mean, to me, to bring, and not only me, it comes from other folks, like business owners at the medical center, they approached me when Center Street's going through, I said, it's not up to me, folks. They said, well, we were told this seven, eight years ago, back in 2006, 2007. Here it is, August of 2021, and the questions are still being asked. So that's another concern. It's not only me, it's residents, you know, business owners, they say, you know, Center Street would be prime, it would help grow businesses for businesses to come into the area, not only businesses, but other things, residents that would like to move to the town. And, but a lot of comments I hear as well is, there's nothing for families here in Mount Airy. What do our kids do? You know, and that's another, and that's part of this design comprehensive plan that they did. If you read through it, it's all in there.
And right now, Mr. Beck, we're, all we're deciding is whether the zoning should occur through this separate ordinance instead of going through the master plan, which we're currently working on.
Well, the MXD zoning is in this, it's mentioned in here.
Yes, I, I do understand that.
And buyers of our property have met with us and, and said, and have mentioned that as well, too. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Adam Wiles, do you wish to speak? Mark Richards? Yes.
That's hi. My name is Mark Richards, I'm fourth generation Mount Airy.
Excuse me, Mark, can you give your address? You're supposed to give your address when you come up to speak, I apologize.
Well, I was getting ready to say that we've, my family, my grandmother and grandfather lived on Main Street. I live on Main Street, 1002 North, North Main Street, my parents as well. I don't feel prepared to discuss in depth some of my concerns, I'll just briefly state that my concern centers around the negative impact that I see to the downtown section of Center Street being allowed to connect directly with Main Street. I have some information which I'd like to leave and have copied for you guys to review, and I'd be willing to discuss individually at another meeting, but more in depth, the negative impact that I think is going to occur if Center Street is allowed to connect from Route 27 to Main Street. Currently, there are only two north-south routes that carry traffic through Mount Airy. One is Route 27. I remember when it was built, it was called the bypass then, it's no longer the bypass, people are, believe me, they speed by my house every, every rush hour to...
Need 26,000 a day.
Yes, yeah, to, to avoid Route 27, so...
No, not on Main Street, that's on 27.
If, if that's okay, if I can leave a copy of this for you...
All right.
We can discuss it.
If you'll give it to Mr. Breeding, he'll in turn get it to us.
I'm going to give it to Debra.
Thank you.
Lindy? Go ahead and give your address.
Yes, Lyndi Camerata, 201 Lookout Avenue. As a homeowner, right next to the Beck property, I have great concerns about my 100-year-old house and the value of that, and what it's going to do. When I talked to other neighbors, they had no clue. And when we got the cute little card, which almost like, oh, this is like, let's recycle this, it wasn't big and big, you know, like, oh, hey, this was just like, the Camerata, oh, by the way. I mean, it was just a little business card. I'm wondering how many homeowners saw that and just recycled it, didn't even go pay attention to it. So a concern about people not knowing, and then a concern about all the other, you know, residents all around this property. Thank you.
Okay. And Ron, are you here? Did you wish to speak as well?
Uh, what plan?
It's your choice.
Yes, I know. Ron Camerata, 201 Lookout Avenue also. My biggest concern is the small peninsula that goes almost to Park Avenue. As a matter of fact, the properties on Park Avenue actually border the property. These are some of our oldest homes in Mount Airy. Ours is actually 120 years old, not 100 years old. And it seems to me there's a real possibility of one morning us waking up and seeing somebody's loading dock off our back porch. I don't think the people on Park Avenue realize that potential exists, and if it doesn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but as best I can tell from mixed use, they can pretty much put anything they want on that property. Also wondering about, the only access to that end of the property is Carroll Avenue, which if you drive down that street, there's parking on both sides, there's very little off-street parking, and if that becomes the access point for that end of the property, those people, or you will have to re-change what is there currently, and they're not going to have any place to park. So, that's it.
Good. All right, looks like Kristen and Andrew, is it Howard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, good.
Hello, Kristen Howard, 207 Carroll Avenue. We're actually at the dead end bordering the Beck property. To support the previous comments that were said, we also have significant concerns about both connecting Center Street, thoroughfares, Main Street, traffic is already horrendous, Park Avenue, traffic is already horrendous, and to have that come down, a residential with very little off-street parking is of significant concern. Also is the rezoning to mixed-use development. Again, comments were made about growing the community, how this was done, 2008, 2013, however, there are still businesses, both on Lookout, on South Main Street, and on North Main Street, that struggled to maintain capacity, and in fact are often at half-capacity. What would be the purpose of bringing in even more business that we can't actually maintain, that would just be largely empty property, and then an eyesore to the residents and a headache for traffic? Thank you.
All right. All right. Is Andrew here with you? Does he wish to speak? All right. Thank you. We, we wanted to give it the chance. All right, Tom and Michelle Bowen?
We're okay, thank you.
All right. Doug and Jen Hubbard?
Uh-huh.
511 David Street, or David Court, where is that located?
Right at Beck Drive, the road that's going to cut through to this park.
Okay, all right.
So you don't want to make any comments?
Not right now, I just, I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, 509 David Court, looks like Tina, I'm not sure, H-A-W-S-E? No, all right. Emily Edwards, 507 David Court?
I'll make it but comment.
Okay, it's your choice.
Hi. Again, I'm Emily Edwards at 507 David Court. I am actually a newcomer to Mount Airy. I bought my first house here last summer. Excited to be here, looked for houses for years. One of the things that really drew me to Mount Airy is it is a very small-town feel, and I understand that you can't stop progress, it's, it's going to happen, I mean, it usually always does, but this is one of the very few areas in the DC-Baltimore-Fredrick triangle that really hasn't been overdeveloped, in my opinion. And there are enough amenities here that you want to be here, there's businesses, there's restaurants, but it still has that small-town feel to it. And I feel like you're going to lose that if you continue to develop all these properties into these mixed-use zoning areas. I live basically, as, as they've said, on the connecting road where Beck Drive is, and I bought that house last year because it was on a dead-end road, no, no traffic, very quiet, but it's still right off I-70, and it's very convenient. And I feel like if you connect that road, you're going to have people speeding through there, and as some of the others have said, you're going to have loading docks, and you're going to have businesses that are going to create noise and traffic and all kinds of things. So I think, for me, I understand, I'm a newcomer, I don't really understand the background and the history of a lot of this stuff, but I think you're going to lose your charm if you continue to develop some of these properties, and especially in, in that area where you're looking, where it kind of grows from your downtown business areas, and it's starting to spread out into farmland at that point.
Emily, when did you move here?
I moved June of last year.
And where, where did you move from?
So I've lived in Maryland since college, so 20-plus years. I've lived in Baltimore, I lived in Frederick for a while, I've lived in Owings Mills. I actually thought I was going to buy in Newmarket, and then I saw what they were doing to their developed areas, all the new townhomes and gas stations and all that stuff that's cropped up in the last couple of years, and I decided I didn't want to live there. I grew up in a small town, and this really had that small-town feel for me. So I think I'm nervous that it's going to change, just having me gotten in the door here, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the sign-in list is BJ Horn, Valley View Court? Yes, sir?
Hey, I'm Byron Horn, 5409 Valley View Court. Couple things, the, the Mrs. or Ms. Dickman, Dickinson, she made a lot of good points about as far as the expediting the process. When I saw the meeting of last month, there was a lady that was sitting in your seat, I believe, blonde hair, been here since, I don't know, 66 years or something, and then this gentleman, they made the strongest, strongest points about, he was worried about taking his family down to Rio and trying to recreate a kind of a situation like that in Mount Airy. It's one of his, like he said, he could take them here as opposed to driving them down to Mount Airy. That was one of his primary arguments. And then the, the young lady was speaking in terms of services, but she didn't give us, it was vague, so what services, the services that we want, there's no definition. Then when I went onto the website to look at some of the projections and how this would all transpire, has there been any sensitivity analysis, what the impact is, and then also with respect to the, the recent HUD, where they're trying to take and bring some of the urban to the more rural areas, that there's, I can't think of the particular HUD, a memorandum or whatever, they're trying to push, where Trump put it on hold, and then, that now that's subsequently, the Biden administration has reworked it and it's out for comments now. And basically what it's doing is they're trying to bring diversity to the urban communities, and this is something that would be troubling, because with, with that goes increased crime rates and some other unnecessary problems that we might be facing, because we've already had an increase with the explosion of the population. I've been here since 77, and we've already had some of these issues. And so there's also these invisible taxes. We have more people, then our insurance rates go up, the crime rates go up, our property, homeowners' insurance increases, there's a lot of hidden costs that aren't even addressed in this, and when they're talking about some of this mixed use and building up, as the lady that was sitting in your seat last week was referring to, you, if we're bringing in Section 8 housing and some of these other issues to the area, which are probably, they have a lot of drawbacks, and then there's no, been no study as far as how this impacts overall, you know, how much development, and then also in the notice here, it says the adequate public facilities ordinance, and then during periods of inadequacy. What is the current, is it a current deficit now in the public space?
Open space.
Which, which ordinance are you speaking about right there?
This is in 2021-16, and I think it also mentions it in 2021-17, adequate public facilities ordinance with respect to the, the amendment to change the 100-person and the three acres to this new formula?
Sir, we're not actually discussing that ordinance tonight, that was last month. So it's, it's 2021-17.
But isn't that, but that, isn't that tied into this?
That's already been passed back to town council.
Okay.
So that's, that's not what we're here discussing tonight.
Okay. All right, well, I guess that's, I mean, those are my biggest concerns, the increase in the, the traffic, what about the crowding in the schools and, and some of those issues, and the crime subsequently, if you're building a bunch of houses, you know, building up apartment complexes and things of that nature, so that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Can I, can I respond? Mr., did you say Horn?
Yep.
Is it Byron Horn?
Yep.
That's so weird, I have a good friend in Fort Myers, but he's from Delaware, named Byron Horn. All right, Mr. Horn, so, so Bill is, Bill Butts is the vice chair, and Roxanne Hemphill, who was at the last meeting, running the last meeting, she's the chair of the Planning Commission, she's on the phone, because she's sick. And I, and I just wanted to clarify, what you may be talking about with HUD is the affirmatively furthering fair housing?
Yeah, I think that's...
Okay. So jurisdictions that receive federal funding are required to do that. So all this money we're getting from the federal government, especially the ARP or the whatever, and we get other federal money. So it's kind of like hand in hand, if you get federal money, then you have to father, follow federal law, and you have to further, affirmatively further, it's very hard to say, fair housing. So yes, that, and, and it doesn't have anything to do with Section 8. In this state, landlords cannot refuse to rent to Section 8 holders, it's discrimination based on source of income was outlawed last session, so... But affirmatively furthering has nothing to do with Section 8, just so you know, it's, it's building and stuff like that, so, just to clarify.
Okay. Is Victor in the audience? Yes. Victor, do you wish to speak? Victor, introduce yourself.
My name is Victor Kazanjin, I'm with CAS Brothers, we're a real estate development company, and we have been involved as the real estate developer-to-be on the Beck property for five years. And so I wanted to address some of the things that we've talked about tonight, some of the concerns, some of the statements. So when I started on this project, 2016, the MXD was just getting started, it was in a paper form, it was just getting started to be discussed. It took four years of hearings, charrettes, Design Collective weighing in, town council meetings, planning commission meetings, special work sessions, you name it. We've all talked 100 times, we've gotten sick of seeing me here. It has been discussed a million times, and people have had the opportunity to weigh in many, many different times. What came out of it actually was better than I could have hoped for in terms of a fair document, and I think it was a really good document, once we got down to the brass tacks and we started talking about realities of what we can or can't do. But it's been something that has been discussed many, many, many times in this room and outside of this room. So it's not a new thing. And the second, I guess the follow-up to that is, and to follow up with what you said, it's, there's some inevitability, it's not inevitable that it's going to get approved, but it's like, like you said, it's likely to be approved. It's possible it won't get approved, but pushing it from now to two years, or possibly even three years, however long it takes that master plan, is basically saying, we just don't want it again. It's not a, it's not a function of, we're not sure about this property. This property has been discussed ad nauseam, in every different form we could think of, the literal thinnest amount of development to the most amount of development and everything in between. So this project has been discussed many times. If you say, we want to push it off, you're saying, we just want to push it off. It's not that this project hasn't had the opportunity to be discussed thoroughly and to talk about its merits. I've been on Zoom calls with Councilwoman Munder, we've talked about this zoning, this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, where I was on Councilwoman Reed, we've talked about the importance of connecting Center Street to not only bring downtown more accessible to the 26,000 cars that drive by 27, but to also create complementary uses. So I will go back to a couple of things that were mentioned by some of the people in the audience. The idea is clearly not to cannibalize or recreate this wonderful downtown street, it's to supplement it with other things that will bring people to the downtown so that they do their activities, services, needs, eating, enjoyment, both at the Beck property and more importantly, in the downtown area. Center Street connection is crucial to... in the downtown area. Center Street connection is crucial to that. There's been, you know, discussion about, can there be a loading dock in my backyard? Or can there be, can they just put it anywhere they want? I mean, for the people that have been involved, we know that that's not going to happen because design is strictly the province of the Planning Commission and the Town Council to say whether or not it's acceptable or not. But I would, I would point people to that Design Collective plan, because we've talked about it many times. Mr. Beck brought in some comments from that plan that he wanted to share. But if you have a question about what you think is going to look like, it's going to look like very much that plan. That was an excellently done plan. You had the right people. They did a good job. They have residential next to residential that transitions into other residential, that transitions into retail or commercial or whatever you want to refer to it as. That design plan is a good plan and it's very representative, I think, what will happen when this property finally develops. So there are some concerns about traffic and there's concerns about what's going to be next to my house and connections and things like that. But all of that will get discussed, probably ad nauseam again, during the actual site plan process. And one thing I think that we, you know, discussed and you guys eventually adopted, both at the Planning Commission and the Town Council, is that the first step in this process under the MXD ordinance, which is approved, is that the Planning Commission, the Town Council, and everybody in town gets to look at the project first. And we get to show as the developer, these are all the things we want to do. This is how many units we want to build. This is where we want to show the commercial. This is how we're going to build the residential. These are the roads we're going to open. This is all of the open space. And if we don't get past that first step where everyone is saying generally, this project plan is a good plan and we like it, it goes nowhere. But everyone gets a say at that point. There's going to be public charrettes. There's going to be the Town Council approval. There's going to be Planning Commission review and recommendations. So a rezoning of this property to MXD, which I think is going to happen in the 23 plan, but I think there doesn't need to be a two-year delay to do it, the rezoning doesn't change any of those things. We're going to be back here many, many times discussing designs, density, and all of the things that are associated with it. I would say that if there's a legal significance to the 2013 plan, and I believe there is, because it says in there, when there's an MXD ordinance, this property is appropriate for MXD zoning, I think this is the time to do it. I've talked to the council people multiple times, both in person and on Zoom. And one of the questions I've asked, been asked many, many times is, how long is this going to take? Not like we want it to take 20 years. We need you to get some of these things done, Center Street being number one. If we push off this zoning another two years, planning by itself is going to take three years, plus site development. This is not going to happen tomorrow. If you rezone it tonight, which we're not going to do, it's just a recommendation, it's just a discussion, but even if you rezoned it tonight, we are still three-plus, probably four-plus years away from having anything on the ground. And so each time we talk about delaying, we're really just talking about delaying. We're really not talking about, we need to discuss MXD some more, or we need to discuss this property. It's really just a delay. So that would be my caution on this one. It can go down that path, but it will change everything. It will push everything back. And anybody who has any questions about the project, I'm always happy to answer. We've gone through many things in public, on the record, on the film, all those kind of things. I've been very clear about what I think we can do, can't do, should do, shouldn't do. You guys have been as well. It's been a great collaboration. I hope it continues that way. But I think it is time at this point to get this zoning done and then take the next step where we're all working on something substantive instead of talking about, yeah, it probably should be MXD, but we're going to wait a couple more years. That's just my thoughts.
So I hear you saying that you will, you're also receptive to questions or conversation that
Absolutely.
residents would love to have with you directly.
Absolutely. In fact, I'll sit down, but if people want to ask me questions and you want to call me back up, I'm happy to talk to anybody.
All right. Well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and get through these folks who signed up.
Thank you.
I've got one more on the list here. Kathy and Randy Williams. Do you wish to speak tonight?
Just briefly.
Okay.
I'm Kathy Williams, 211 Frederick Avenue. Can I touch it? So, thank you for your time. Just briefly, I live 211 Frederick Avenue, which is the, across the street from Kristen who spoke earlier, at the dead end of Carroll Avenue. So I would echo her concerns about the traffic on Carroll Avenue and the fact that there's almost no parking off-street at that point. So I also think very highly of the time that I spend with my neighbors there at that corner. We gather for 4th of July picnics in the middle of the street, which probably wouldn't happen once we're, you know, if there's a lot more traffic there. And then finally, the gentleman who just spoke here indicated that there have been multiple opportunities for people to review and weigh in. And I think this is the first postcard I got as a property owner. I've lived there nine years. Yeah, regarding this particular initiative. So I don't know how many of those I might have missed. It's not impossible, but this is the first one I remember seeing. And it's the first time I remember seeing anything posted on the barricade at the end of Carroll Avenue saying, here's an issue that affects you as a property owner here.
And that was my doing, putting the signs up because I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that what was going on.
Right.
Thank you, Lyndi.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bill, can I say one thing?
Yes.
I have put some extra copies of the Vision Plan out on the table, so if anybody would like to grab one as they're leaving, or if there's not enough, just reach out to me and we'll get you a copy of it for you. Also wanted to relay that this also was sent to Carroll County for their, their direction and their input. And they basically, all their agencies said that the zoning that was being proposed for these lots or for this parcel would, basically everybody had approvals for it. Nobody had any recommendations or denials in that presentation.
Are there any local residents here who did or did not sign up that wanted to speak and haven't already? Yes? Go ahead. You're a local resident?
I am.
All right.
Susan Cox. And for someone to say, I apologize for coming in late. I thought it started seven.
Not a problem.
I live 503 David Court. 503 David Court.
What's your name?
Susan Cox.
Yes, who is?
Susan Cox.
Susan Cox.
Right.
I'm not a public speaker, but this has bothered me enough where I really feel like I need to say something. I, you know, we're right off of Beck. And I foresee if Beck goes through to Center Street or 27, however it ends up getting worked out, I mean, on the website, it says up to 26,000 cars travel on 27. And nobody here can tell me that people aren't going to say, I don't want to sit at the light at 27 in Twin Arch. I'm cutting through. It's going to happen. And we're a residential neighborhood. We have children. Same with the folks that are on Carroll and Frederick. And it's going to really impact our way of life. I mean, I get, they want to develop and they spend a lot of money. I get it. But, I mean, there's got to be some kind of option or something where we're not going to have a ton of traffic streaming through our neighborhood. I mean, it's just going to be awful. Has anybody considered that? Or is it just kind of like, oh, well, there's going to be houses there. They have to cut through to Park Avenue. It's the way it is. I mean, it's going to be bad. And then what happens? I mean, speed bumps? Or, I mean, has this been considered? That's how it's going to affect the residents? Anybody have any thoughts?
It's actually, we're just taking comment this evening. We're not actually responding to the comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because again, this, this item will actually be either granted a positive or a negative recommendation back to Town Council.
Okay.
They'll get the information back to them. They're going to send another public hearing for you to come and present your concerns again to the Town Council, and then they'll make the final decision. We're just making a recommendation as the Planning Commission staff.
Oh, okay.
And I'm staff. I'm not, they're the commission members, two on the phone.
So just
I'm a rookie.
Yeah, it's all right. So, you know, a, a recommendation of this ordinance back to Town Council doesn't pave Center Street. It's, what it allows the property to do is be developed to something that would be useful to the residents. So that's what you're actually looking at. It's not, you know, we put it through, we send it up to Town Council and Carroll and Company, and it instantly gets, like the bulldozers are out there paving Center Street. So it's kind of separate. I mean, but what it does allow that property to be, to be, what, to be done on that property is to be properly developed for something that you want to see and have in your community. Because if you're not familiar with MXD properties or, you know, areas around us that have been developed that way.
It's mixed development?
It's mixed-use development, where you're living, working, eating, all these things that can happen in an area. And I, you know, go on the internet and look them up and there's plenty around from here to, you know, Bethesda. You can find five, six of them, great ones. And they're not going to ever be that big. But what you get to see is what it looks like when people are living, working, eating, finding everything they need around them. And it's not, it doesn't become Gaithersburg. It doesn't have to become Rockville. But it's, it just, it allows for the developer and the surrounding area to, to create something that is useful instead of just like putting a, like a factory there or something. Because ultimately, properties will get developed and you want them to be developed to what you would like to see there, right? So we're trying to figure out how best to allow that property to get something on it that you would like to see. And I know you're like, what is that? But trust me, it's got a better chance being something you want to see with it being MXD than it not being. The other alternative is that we never move on and it just stays farmland forever, which is also not useful. So, or not farmland, but undeveloped property. No, sorry, sorry about that. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I didn't mean farmland. I meant fields. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, sorry. Okay. Okay. So you say enough things, you're bound to say something wrong. So my point is that the, the farmland's not useful. So, all right. So, sorry for that. But my point is, is that right now, if you have an undeveloped piece of land, it's, and it's not farmland, and it's just a field, then you can say, if you're not playing in it, it's, it could be something else. And we're just trying to make sure that these pieces of land that are, that are sitting there, get, that are going to eventually likely get developed, become something that are useful to the community. And, I mean, you can read about it and see, you know, look, I mean, I highly recommend you grab that Vision Plan that John has printed out.
I was looking at it online.
What's that? You're looking at it?
I was looking at it online.
It's actually really nice because it's printed really big too. So grab yourself a printed copy. But if you look at it, you can see that it's, it's nice. It's actually, like, there's a lot of nice things in there. So that's the idea. I just want to clear that up because I think a lot of folks are thinking that the minute we say something here at the end of the meeting, it's going to be like, there's going to be bulldozers parked out there and paying.
Well, actually, I was told there are bulldozers down by Watkins Park.
It's traffic. It's water. It's something totally unrelated. Where we finally got it, got around, we're replacing the water main that runs from 27 down Center, Center Street. It's a utility construction. It has nothing to do with the property. So don't have to worry about that.
So my rambling anyway
No, that's fine.
was that I, my fear and my neighbors
Understood. Understand.
were just worried about the traffic.
And we're fearful for that too. We, we understand that.
I do. We totally understand.
Bill, can I just say one thing?
Yes, I was going to, I was going to give the
I just want to say one thing. I'm not going to say anything. It's just, I just want to make people aware, if you're not, that there is current zoning on the Beck property that pretty much mirrors the MXD. There is current zoning on this property that is residential, industrial, community, commercial. So even if nothing happens here, you're still going to see it potentially develop to the same type of uses that are in the mixed use. So I just want to, want to make that, it's not zoned agricultural right now. It's just being used as that. So that does not mean it will stay agricultural. Somebody could come in, give the Beck's an offer or something, okay, we'll develop it under the current zoning and you could get the same thing that's there now. So I just want to make people aware that there's not, it's not zoned residential. I know
Actually, actually, community commercial is, is more intensive than what you could get under mixed use.
It's probably not going to be nearly as beneficial.
If you look at the maps I have out in the lobby, I'm sorry, Bill, to interrupt, but the maps out in the lobby show the four different zone types. The red is community commercial. The one orange-yellow is residential R2. The other one is R7, which is more of a brown, which is a much denser. And the purple is industrial. So the current property as it stands could be developed in those zones, which is a mix of residential, high residential density, industrial, and community commercial. So if you look at the couple of maps I have out there, the one that has the multicolors, and I can help walk it through to anybody if they're curious.
Yeah, I saw that online. And I saw there was like a hotel too, which was kind of disturbing, but
I don't think there's a hotel.
It's allowed.
That's a conceptual vision. It's not, it's not exactly what's going to be there.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, no, yeah. Thank you.
All right, we have
Dave Bowersox wants to say something as well.
Oh, all right. Come on, come on up, Dave. And then I'll, I'm going to give the, the two Planning Commission members who are not here tonight, Martina and Roxanne, a chance to weigh in if they'd like to.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To be back with you again.
Good to see you.
I brought this along to try to ensure that I wouldn't get rained on.
It's raining outside right now.
Oh, it is. Yeah, that worked. Good evening. I'm Dave Bowersox. My address is 24 North Court Street, Westminster, Maryland. For some time, I've had the privilege of representing the Beck family in this endeavor. Through them, I've gotten to meet Victor Kazanjin. And I, I find him to be quite a fastidious student of land development game. I can tell you in the past, he's made opportunities available in the infancy of this idea to try to help everyone understand what a mixed-use development really looks like. He's brought a well-known, nationally well-known architect to town for a session to try to answer questions, help educate. And he's been a pleasure to work alongside of. I'm going to ask you formally to make a favorable recommendation to the council for the MXD. And what I'm going to say is basically just to amplify a lot of what you've said. There's been a lot of good points that have been made here this evening. But the notion that I want to dispel is I have heard in the past and maybe a little bit this evening about some kind of favoritism of this property, almost sounding like, why are we doing this property? Why are we signaling them out for special treatment? And why, why are we doing this all of a sudden? In the 2003 Master Plan, this goes back before the 2008 origins that you were talking about. When you review that, Chapter 4 of that document, it becomes very clear that this mixed-use development idea has been around since the mid-'90s. This isn't new. It's not some Johnny-come-lately idea. This has been something that the town has had their eyes on for 20 years. At page 54, the discussion goes, Chapter 4 of the 2003 Master Plan, over the past 10 years, they talk about some things they've seen when they were preparing the 2000 plan. And they've talked about discussions about developing mixed-use commercial to stimulate development. They were looking to stimulate housing diversification, more than a cookie cutter sprawl kind of a development. They were expressing in hopeful terms, I'm sure that was politically tempered, tempered, about they, there was an absence of a PUD, a Plan Unit Development Ordinance for the town. And they saw some, some, some options there that they wanted to encourage. They go on to talk about the neighborhood professional district, which encouraged residential and commercial transition with professional offices, and limited commercial. So the idea of a blended, So the idea of a blended, if you will, infill kind of development area was around in the town psyche, let's say, since the mid 70, mid 90s, and at least in the early 2000s. Now, let's go to the 2013 plan. Also in chapter four of that, they talk about a review of new and proposed zoning districts after they reviewed the existing districts. And what they said is, one of the ones that they described is a mixed use district. And they didn't express it in terms of maybe this is something we'd like to think about and maybe develop later. They talked about wanting to have a district which promoted walkable living development centers, more diverse commercial and residential options, strong emphasis on pedestrian connectivity, and planned town amenities such as parks, et cetera. So we see that it was, Ms. Dickinson, I will take umbrage with that one come on of yours, it did exist, it hadn't been finalized, and as Mr. Butts said early, it was on a par with its twin, so to speak, procedurally, O P E. O P E has been allowed to come to the finish line. We're looking at trying to implement the 2013 M X D now. Well, let's talk about specifically the Beck property, and whether the Beck's have somehow been singled out for this, this review ahead of someone else and ahead of a, a comprehensive stage review. If you look again at chapter four of the 2013 plan, page 87, the Beck property is specifically discussed in that there had been some requests for the property, the R7 property to be zoned It was not supported by planning in 2013 because it was identified as a prime choice for the mixed use district that was to be developed pursuant to the 2013 plan in comprehensive zoning. It's taken until now to do it. I, I want to, I want to dismiss any notion that there is a hard and fast temporal limitation within which we must adopt ordinances and other implementing devices for purposes of a comprehensive plan, a zoning code, zoning ordinance, the zoning map. If that was the case, Carroll County's current exercise would be doomed, as long as they're taking and as piecemeal as that operation's going. So I'd like to dispel, because the Beck's do hear this, why are you, as if they have the control, why are you not allowing this to happen? And then others are saying, why are they being singled out for favorable treatment? One could argue that in 2013, they were singled out. They were singled out for no favorable treatment at all because the favorable treatment they requested, because all along, the plan was to incorporate their property within the M X D district. It's interesting, we've talked about Center Street and the vision plan. The vision plan has two Beck-related priorities mentioned. One is Center Street. You can't talk about the rail line and the improvements at the station without acknowledging that the zoning of the Beck property is an integral part of that happening. There's no denying it. The 2013 comprehensive plan talks about not only Center Street being a crucial and long-discussed link for transportation systems, but Century Drive on the east side of the Beck property, it will connect up and solve another problem with another, probably, I believe, your worst functioning intersection in town.
It's tied for number one.
Right.
To our chart.
There was some discussion in the plan, some about, well, do we want to relocate it to someplace else? And the decision was, no, keep it there, because we want that to connect through for an M X D development on the Beck property. So all, what, what is before you is a recommendation. You're 97% of a job done. What do you achieve if we don't go ahead and rezone the property now? What positive achievement do we have in the face of the historical planning that's going on around this? The road improvements? I get that some of these people have only found out about this lately, and, and I don't doubt them at all. But this has been in the wind since the 1990s. Some may say, where's the fire? What's the hurry? Well, I'd certainly hope that your, it's good to know that your emergency services response time is a lot better than your planning and zoning response time in Mount Airy. 20 years is a long time to hatch an idea. So for the Beck family, I just want to dispel any idea that they are somehow getting a break here by this consideration. Nothing of the sort. But I would, I would favor, I would ask that you favorably recommend.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, and now we want to reach out to Martina, Roxanne, if you have any comments or response to the testimony we've heard so far. Martina, how about you first?
Hi, thanks, Bill. I've been sitting here trying to take notes. I, I apologize that I'm not there, but due to COVID, I'm trying to be careful. I want to thank everybody for coming out and expressing their opinions, and I learned a lot from the residents tonight, as well as from everyone else who participated. So I just wanted to say thank you for clarifying some things, and thank you for sharing how you feel about potential projects pending in Mount Airy.
All right, super. All right, Roxanne, your thoughts?
You know, I, I kind of like, just need to reiterate what Martina said. I appreciate everyone that's there, that has come there to give their opinions, and I really want everyone to take Victor's offer, to sit down and talk to him. As a matter of fact, I would highly encourage, if this continues and goes forth, that he has some public meetings with those individuals that will be affected, and, and not in a, you know, not in this type of setting, but he just has it with those people and goes over what, what he's, you know, what they're planning. I really don't have any other questions. I appreciate everybody's time tonight, and I think I'm ready to vote.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Roxanne.
Make a motion, I guess.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion if you so choose.
Well, I'll make a motion that we favorably recommend that the council consider the ordinance 2021-17.
Okay, is there a second? And that can be from Roxanne or Martina or the planning commission members that are here.
Uh, Bill, this is Roxanne, I'll second.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to provide a favorable recommendation to town council on ordinance number 2021-17. That simply keeps it alive and keeps it available for their consideration. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Well, let, let me do it by, let me, by voice vote. Carl?
I can't vote unless there's a time.
All right. Scott?
Yea.
All right, I will vote yea as well.
Nay.
Got a nay? Martina?
Yea.
Roxanne?
Yea.
All right, we've got four to one at this point. Okay? And that's, we've got a quorum, so it passes.
We do.
All right, so we.
It's a pass, it's a recommendation.
Well, it, it. The motion passes, meaning we forward a favorable recommendation to council for their consideration.
Who will revisit it?
So it's still alive, it's going to be revisited, there's a lot more opportunity for public input. There will also be additional public feedback opportunity. Okay? We've been talking about it for a long time, and it continues. All right, moving forward. That brings us to.
Again, I just want to mention, Bill, real quick, if nobody, if somebody wants a vision plan and there's not enough copies out there, please reach out to me during the work week, and I'll get you a copy. John Breeding.
I have time.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes.
Time will maybe notify at the next meeting, or do you have to sign at the end of the primaries again?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be doing the same signage, and we'll probably send out postcards.
It'll be at the town council. It'll occur, it'll occur at the next town, not the next, it'll occur at the future town council meeting.
Right, but will you notify, just Monday or what?
First Monday, the, well, this, the next meeting is in September, the 13th. I don't think this will be in front of them, but possibly.
Right.
It'll be just setting a public hearing then.
At the town council, not here.
And at any time, at any time, you can go on the town website, and you can identify the upcoming meeting agendas for both council and any of the commissions, including planning. So that's another way to monitor what topics will be coming up.
If you're tracking this item, it's now moved to the next level. So to town council, where Carl is and Stephen.
Yeah, just let me reach out to me through the town website, and I'll be more than happy to keep you informed too.
Thank you. And for coming out.
Thank you.
All right. Planning commission, we're going to move on to ordinance 2021-18, proposed new code section 112-19.1, wireless facilities related to all zoning districts. I found this material very, very impressive. Tom, did you want to give us a little intro and some background on this?
Sure, the Reader's Digest version.
Exactly.
Basically, in order to impose some restrictions on aesthetics where these facilities go and things like that, municipalities have to pass ordinances to, in advance of an application for one of these, you've got to have it on the books, so that you can reasonably regulate those wireless facilities. You can't go so far as to think the jingle is substantially inhibit or impair the location of these somewhere in the town, but you certainly have the ability, I think, to say where they should go, and what they should look like, how tall they can be to, within limits, and things like that. So this ordinance was drafted, I was asked by council president Porter to draft it, it was kind of in the works already. This ordinance is modeled after a Manchester ordinance, which was fairly recently adopted. That itself, as you can imagine, was modeled after other similar ordinances. So this is, the highlights of this, I would say, at a very high level are, this gives the planning commission a lot of discretion, input, on what these will look like, how, you know, where they'll go, and things like that, with certain limitations. The way Manchester decided to do it, and thus, the way this is written up, is, you know, they have said, look, large public spaces where it can be spread out, i.e. their parks, recreational, outdoor recreational areas is where these should go, as the general rule allows other areas to, sort of as an exception, to be granted by the planning commission, but again, with certain limitations that are spelled out in the ordinance. So that's sort of the high-level Reader's Digest version of this. This isn't the only way you can do it, and I mentioned this before, other municipalities have chosen to do it in slightly different ways. Some of them have treated these facilities as a special exception, such that, in other words, it would be a recommendation from the planning commission and ultimately decide whether appeals in what municipality we're talking about. So that, you know, would be a sort of a variation of how to handle this. But at the end of the day, what you're going to want is to be pretty clear in spelling out in some kind of way. And I think Councilman Munder has a suggestion that seemed good to me. You're going to want to spell out by ordinance where these go, what they look like, what restrictions you want to have, and then you have to spell out a process by which you're going to impose those in a given case, you're going to rule them, et cetera. And it seemed to me that, just as an aside, that handling like a site plan, basically, is what this is, and that's, and what Manchester opted for, and that seemed to be a, a good way to go, so.
And, you know, I just want to let you know, I did attach three different samples of different, you know, guidelines from a couple of different municipalities, you know, from, and I have one that's five times thicker than this.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, it's, it's, I didn't want to copy that one, but, I mean, but it, it's, there's a wide gambit of what we can sort of maybe tailor arrows towards, so it's just.
A general question I have, because this is new technology, and this seems to me, while it's, it's a very smart way to try to control, you know, how we design it and what we require and so forth, we're prob, we're going to gain insight with experience.
Yeah.
What's the opportunity to amend, or to improve, or to change this ordinance in the future?
Yeah, so I don't think you could amend to suit a pending application, I think, but.
That wouldn't be appropriate.
Do it for future applications, again, so long as you're not materially, whatever the jingle is, materially inhibiting their ability to locate these facilities somewhere in your town in a useful place that will expand the, the network, obviously.
All right. Carl, did you have a?
Yeah, I, I was going to recommend that we actually, I don't want to say get rid of the ordinance, but put the ordinance in guideline form, kind of like what the, I think Greenwood, Greenwood Village did, the Colorado, because I liked some of the things in here, and we can just put in ordinance, no reference in ordinance must be installed regarding, you know, following the guidelines and any updates, and then just maybe put in code, like, you know, the stuff that we don't want changed as time goes by, like, you know, the height of the towers, the distance of the towers from one, one another, and things of that nature, because as Bill said, this is a very much new technology, so as it evolves, things will change. So it might be easy to change the guidelines instead of going through and changing the code all the time.
Is that going to be sufficient?
Well, I mean, obviously, these are, this is not chartered territory, right? There are a lot, a lot of court cases on this that tell us this. I would think that the answer is yes, but, and it certainly would simplify your ordinance to a degree, you're still going to want to spell some things out.
Yeah.
But, you know, it does get down to the question of then, whose guidelines are these? Who changes them in the future? You know, is the town council going to be okay with the planning commission, you know, sort of exclusively handling what the guidelines say?
I mean, it's just a thought, because I liked some of the stuff that was in the guide, the guidelines, like, you know, everything had to be buried.
I didn't read that book, so is that, you want some stuff that's in there to be in here?
In the ordinance or something, yeah. Yeah, because I just, I just liked the way they were designing, it's like, a lot of stuff couldn't really be above ground, most of the communication, the bulky stuff would have to be. the bulky stuff would have to be in a vault next to the pole. So it's much more, to me, aesthetically pleasing. And then it had certain conditions in residential and commercial and things of that nature.
So I think I asked this last time about the, how quickly we feel like we need to get this done. And you said, like, they're not meeting at our door.
How fast do you want 5G?
It's like, it's like, do we want to, like, get it, get it passed, so we have something in the code, and then we can amend it if we need to? So we have something passed.
Thinking from a Planning Commission standpoint, there's a difference between our support for going ahead and moving forward with a general ordinance, or at least a recommendation to council. You know, that we support that. And we're definitely in favor of that. But to give them the latitude, if, if they want, how they present it, how they set it up, maybe some of the considerations, you know, that, that you're offering.
You're bound by, you're bound by the limitations of the technology, too. So, you know, back in the day, they used to put one, like, giant tower that was super powerful and just beamed over the town. That's not the way this works. So there are multiple towers, they're lower power, right, which is nice if you're living next to it. But they're, but they, they're meshed together, which allows, you know, ultimately, this is how the autonomous vehicles are going to find their way around. But, but, but you're, we're going to have a, we're going to have more of these than we do current cell towers. But you can't govern what they look like. You can pick out which ones you want, or I guess you can figure out what, you know, how you want them managed as far as how they look. But I, I think, you know, ultimately, we can't tie our own hands in saying that, you know, they can't do this, they can't do that, if, unless we're really smart as to what we know, what the state, you know, what the state of the art is and what we don't want or what we do want. But I guess you're, you know, there's, they're trying to make these things as small as they can, as good as they can, as useful as they can. I would like to see us use them if we're going to put them on the sidewalk or something. We make them streetlights or something, because they have other functions. You can, you can do things with them.
Actually, one of the things I liked was no front yards. And, and a minimum, you know, more than a minimum distance.
No front yards.
No front yards.
No front yard.
A minimum distance from major streets and roads.
And we can, and we can figure that out, but, you know, you, we don't, you don't know what it's going to look like. Like, I don't know what the mesh grid is going to look like and how many have to go into the town and where they need to go. But, you know, we can also talk about putting them on top of structures. If you don't want them like downtown here, maybe we can, you know, put tax credits in the buildings that are around here if you're, if you put a tower on top. I mean, there's a lot of things you can do. But I guess we have to, you know, none of us work in the 5G world. And so I, we have to make sure that we, it's like, can't be higher than six feet, can't have them any, you know, more than 10 feet apart. Like, we don't know that, I don't know that. I mean, I don't know what the, what the limits are and how many. So we got to make sure that we don't just put random crap into an ordinance that prevents them from actually laying 5G in town.
You know, through the three examples, Carl, this is the best one I found as well. It's very comprehensive.
Yeah.
And it's very, I think the real big thing is concealment. So I don't care about the antennas. I don't want to have panel boxes eight feet above every street pole. I don't want to have, you know, wires running from the antenna that's on the top down to these control boxes that then go down to a meter that's located at four foot on the, on the pole.
Or poles.
That is horrendous. And that's what Westminster has currently, and it's, it's horrifying every time I drive by it.
Well, that's, it's, it's good that that's out there. And, and so we, we can take notice of it to say, do we or do we not want that in our community?
It was just in the MML, the MML newsletter that was talking about, they've actually are giving more control to the municipalities to control this. Because again, they're having places like Westminster that are just getting these ISORs. And then they're getting these things, ones that they're stacking them. So it's like, it almost looks like some of these monster antennas, where you have like antennas, and then more antennas, and then more antennas. And, you know, once they have their foundation, they can just keep building up unless we say no. And the other thing that I realized, looking into this a lot, is that we don't need to have a 10-foot-tall by 16-inch diameter antenna on top of a hole. It could be an antenna the size of this. And that, and that we should be concerned about the RF outputs of these things. And that maybe we need to have an RF test done for the town to find out, do you really need to put an antenna there? Like, there's enough RF symbols, signal there, you don't need to put an antenna there. You can put it over here, you can put one over there.
So Carl, those are additional points for, you know, for, for council to be aware of and-
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth having maybe a private company come in and just do a blanket RF signal. I don't know the specific language, but it's basically, you know, to get a map or a grid of where our levels are in different areas.
Okay.
They would design as a, like, a what-if planned scenario, where poles would go and things, things of that.
Right, and that plan can actually be funded by, say Verizon or T-Mobile. If they want to bring an antenna to town, well, you got to pay X amount of dollars towards our bi-month, bi-yearly RF scan that we want to do to make sure you're in compliance. That you're not, you're not blasting at 100 dBm.
We're going to need to work with-
It's a traffic study.
Yeah.
Require of a developer.
Yeah. I think it's worthy.
Yeah, we're going to need, we're going to need to work with them, and we do want this. So we don't want to just put our heads in the sand and just say, go move, move on to another town. Because this is, this is something that the town, whether they know, the residents know it or not, we want this. Like, this is going to do a lot for us.
New tech now, and Westminster has, and the biggest problem is, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, right now, if we don't have anything, they can just pretty much put what they want, design where they want it, tall, the type of antenna. So it really benefits the town, even if it takes, you know, five years for it to come.
It gives you the leverage you need.
Need, exactly. Gives us the tool in the toolbox to just say, we want this type of antenna, try and make it aesthetically pleasing. They know what they get into when they come here.
All right, Doc O'Brien raised his hand to make a comment. And then Martina and Roxanne, we're going to turn to you to see if you have anything you want to add. Doc?
Can you please come to the mic, Doc, so people can hear you? State your name and address.
With 6G? I need a 6th Park Avenue. We do want this technology. This is the hottest lick going. It'll probably advance from there. Whatever ordinance is you craft, I think, need to have flexibility for the future. I think at the beginnings of these type of things, you might want to do a special exception-type thing, so that you have more purview about what's happening aesthetically and stuff like that, but also have some flexibility that way. I agree with the RF. I think the town ought to have a consultant, like you would have an electrician or a plumber, to make sure this is installed within all, someone that's smarter than us with this kind of stuff. This is going to be an incredible boost to our town if you own Comcast, because you'll now be able to get streaming, and they'll have to compete.
Yay!
Yeah, I mean, this is, and as far as aesthetics, you can build these, and, and they will come out with aesthetics and aesthetically pleasing things. But I think you need to be flexible, because you don't want to scare them off. I know T-Mobile and Verizon are lining up for Mount Airy, from what I've been told, or this area, within a year to two, T-Mobile being the first people that are interested, and Verizon secondly over two years. But you don't want to scare them off either. We do want this technology, so you need to have some inborn flexibility to attract them. But I would have a consultant that we could rely on to give us information for our purview, rather than a sales pitch from a-
Those are all very good recommendations, especially the, the strength and power of competition for Comcast.
Oh my God, please.
It might be, I'm sorry to build a butt in, but it might be worth, I mean, I hate to say the word, but have a feasibility study, you know? I mean, another study, do we really need it? But maybe we do, maybe we need to figure out what is current, and get somebody who has more knowledge and experience than us. Not T-Mobile, not Verizon, but somebody.
Instead of a commission, I mean, let's get a consultant to give you recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Know the technology and, and give it to us straight and have them rehearse it.
All right.
I think, I think putting the ordinance in place is probably the first step. And then we should look at the guidelines, maybe with our consultant, or we just draft our own guidelines.
Yeah.
And let the consultant say, well, no, you really need to get rid of this, you need to add this, or something. You know, some kind of foundation. That sounds better to me.
Much, much like we did with the downtown master plan, heavy. Okay, we, we want to give Martina and Roxanne a chance to weigh in with any thoughts they had. Either one of you?
Hey, excuse me, sir, keep it down.
Hi, it's Martina.
Okay, you first, go ahead.
Go ahead, Roxanne.
Oh, all right.
Oh, okay, actually, I was just going to say, I, I agree with Doc. I think that we need to have a consultant on this. You know, we can't, I, I don't think there's enough of us in the town that are 5G literate, so to speak, to be able to make the decision. And I think that's a great idea, to have a consultant.
Okay, all right, Martina?
I agree, we need a consultant, and, you know, I, I'm definitely for the technology coming to the town, as long as we can make it, you know, to sound corny, you know, we want to, we want to fit in with our aesthetic of Mount Airy, and it's not necessarily with a bunch of modern-looking technology. So if we can find something that sort of looks old-world but fits this technology, then that would be great.
All right, good, good. All right, the chair would entertain a motion in support or, or not of this ordinance? Anyone wish to do so?
I was trying to think what to say. Oh, I'll do it. No, I was, that's sorry. So I make a motion that we, hold on a second, is there a recommendation in? I apologize. You'll have to forgive me.
Your favorable recommendation.
Well, I, I didn't capture the, the words, yeah.
Why don't you just reference the ordinance?
I don't think, I don't think it's-
I don't know, okay, because I didn't, I didn't, well, I didn't know how to, I, I, yeah. So I, I would like to make a motion that we, we go forward with the ordinance 2021-18.
So this is recommending adoption to the council?
Yes, yes, that's, that's what I-
Favorable recommendation.
A favorable recommendation to the Town Council. I was looking for more intellectual words to capture my thoughts, but I came up short.
I'll second it, I think it's fabulous.
Motion made by, by Scott and seconded by Leslie. All those in favor, or opposed, let's see, Leslie?
I'm in favor. Aye.
Okay, I'm in favor, Scott?
In favor.
I can't vote unless it's-
He's not voting.
That's right. Roxanne?
Uh, yeah, I'm in favor.
All right, okay, and Martina?
I'm in favor.
All right, so that's unanimous. All right, very good. So we will provide a favorable recommendation on this ordinance to, to council. Carl, it, it also occurred to me when you were, when you and, and John were talking about some MML feedback and so forth, I think it's just very, very useful for y'all to be all ears when you're attending MML events and so forth. And if you identify another municipality that might be going through something or, or dealing with the challenge that may be down the road for us, you know, just absorb it all and bring that insight back for the benefit of Mount Airy.
Yeah, I know the cell phone towers have been around with MML and other places for a couple of years now, so. Maybe I should reach out to them and see if they have any potential, you know, draft or suggestions.
And, and I say that because Maryland Planning Commissioner Association is doing the same thing now with our municipalities, because in terms of planning challenges, you know, we're seeing, you know, it's popping up different places, and the more aware we can be and be prepared, the better.
All right, cool.
All right, cool. All right, so those were the only, those two ordinance were the only items for discussion and possible recommendation this evening. Future items, be aware that we had a master plan work session originally scheduled for, let's see, be this Thursday, September the 2nd. That's been canceled.
Yeah, so, since the 2nd, we wouldn't have had it, because it's in the same week as Planning Commission.
Yep.
Then the following week, we moved it to that Thursday, but then, for some reason, I needed to cancel it. Personal reasons.
All right, so October 7th is not going to go forward?
Yeah, October 7th, it will be the next.
Will go forward, so that'll be our next master plan work session.
Correct.
And our next Planning Commission meeting will be September 27th. Okay? Anybody got anything else?
Nope.
All right.
I do have one question, Tom, so, I'm sorry, but being that the Town Council is until the 13th, and this ordinance was on the 6th, 7th, does that-
Which ordinance are you talking about?
2021-17. Does that matter that it's the 13th? Because they gave it a favorable recommendation anyway, so I guess it doesn't matter. We don't, we're not going to need an extension of that.
No, I don't think you, you can make your recommendation within 90 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anyone in the audience? Then we'll adjourn this Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.